Twenty two meeting. Do we have anybody who's got issues with the twenty two meetings or the February twenty two meeting? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll offer a motion with the amendments written.
Do we have a second?
All second.
So a motion and a second, those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Minutes are accepted. And next thing is the review of the proposed code amendments regarding residential zoning.
So, thank you. I will start by informing any of the three or four or five members of the public who are joining the meeting that while tonight was the scheduled time for a public hearing on these proposed code amendments as a result of continuing discussions between the Planning and Development Department and the Public Works Department and a review of the proposed amendments by the city attorney. That public hearing that was scheduled for tonight has been postponed and not yet rescheduled. The agenda item for tonight is continued review of the proposed amendments by the Planning Commission. This will not be a public hearing and there will not, unless the Planning Commission wishes to allow people to speak, there will not be necessarily an opportunity for public comment. With that, in the packet was my staff report, which pretty much said what I just said about continuing review. The city attorney had raised a number of questions, mostly focused around the issue. One of the changes in the proposed amendments is to allow more than one single-family detached dwelling on a lot. Under today's code, a multifamily development can have multiple buildings, a duplex-type development can have multiple buildings, but you could not do a multifamily development made up of all single-family detached structures on a single lot. One of the proposed changes is to allow that. And one of the comments that the city attorney had made, or a number of the comments that the city attorney had made, focused around that change. And as a result of his comments, I have provided to the Planning Commission a number of additional amendments that I have proposed to be included in the package of amendments, mostly dealing with definitions so that it's clear in the code that you can have more than one main building on a lot. Again, today, you have commercial developments with more than one building, industrial developments with more than one building, residential developments with multiple duplexes or multiple triplexes or multiple multifamily buildings on them. They've all been permitted by the city over time. But the city attorney was raising the issue that our definition is of main building, singular, and there is frequent reference in other parts of the code to "the" main building, as if you can only have one main building. So the amendments, the additional amendments that I'm suggesting to the Planning Commission for review this evening are to change the definition of accessory building to, which currently reads "a" building that is incidental and subordinate to the main building, and to change that just by adding parentheses, S, end parentheses, at the end of the word "building" to make it clear that there could be more than one main building. And in the definition of main building, to change that definition to read "the" building, again, parentheses, S, end parentheses, "building" or "buildings," in which is conducted "the" principal use of the lot on which it is situated. To change the definition of front yard to refer to the distance between a property line and the nearest wall of a building instead of "the" main building. Similarly, rear yard to refer to "a" main building instead of "the" main building. Side yard, same change. As written, the proposed amendments say that if there's going to be more than one single-family detached dwelling on a parcel, then it has to go through a site plan review process through usually the Planning Commission, sometimes through staff, depending on the type of development. The city attorney had suggested clarifying that essentially by repeating it in another section of the code in the land use table in footnote one, which applies to single-family dwellings and currently says they're subject to the design requirements. So I've suggested adding a sentence to that footnote that says, "If more than one single-family detached dwelling is proposed on a lot, it is subject to site plan review," even though it says that elsewhere in the proposed amendments. The third change is to change a sentence that's in the proposed amendments that deals with the issue of density. So this is not a change related to the issue of more than one single-family dwelling. But the proposed amendments establish minimum and maximum density requirements, and there's currently a sentence that says no minimum or maximum lot size is established, but instead the review will look at the overall density of development on the original lot. The city attorney's comment was the term "original lot" is not defined, and so how do we know what that means? So I'm suggesting deleting the word "original" and instead it will read, "No minimum or maximum lot size is established," but instead the review will look at the overall density of development on the lot as it existed at the effective date of this paragraph. So whenever this gets adopted, you take the lot as it existed, quote, "today" or "at that time," and that's, its size will determine how many dwelling units can be permitted on it. The fourth change, again, refers to the issue of a main building. They're in Table 1716072, which the minimum lot width requirements, as drafted, referred to the term "principal building" instead of "main building." So the change is to, the additional amendment is to change that table to refer to "main building," which is the defined term. Today, not associated with the amendments, but today, the code has a set of architectural design requirements that apply to single-family homes and manufactured homes that are not located in a mobile home park. And the title of that section in today's code is "Additional Regulations for Single Family Dwellings and Manufactured Homes on Individual Lots." Because we are now, because these amendments propose to allow more than one single-family dwelling on a lot, the city attorney raised the question of, well, what is an individual lot? So I'm suggesting that the title of that section be changed to be "Additional Regulations for Single Family Dwellings and for Manufactured Homes Not in a Mobile Home Park," and that no additional change be made to what those regulations are, but this is just a change in the title of the section. In Section 1720-220, which is the design standards for, 220 is for the downtown zones, there is regulations on the building setbacks. And when that section was written back in 2008, I believe it was, rather than referring to main buildings, we used the term "primary buildings." So again, just to clarify and to be consistent and to use the defined term, I'm suggesting that in two paragraphs of that section, the term, the word "primary" be deleted and the word "main" be inserted. So again, we're referring to, we're using the defined term in the code. Finally, well, I guess, no, it's not finally. The next is the proposed amendments establish a set of standards for a type of development that has become, I don't want to say widespread or popular, but has come about in the past few years called cottage cluster development, where individual, single-family dwellings that may be smaller than normal are built clustered around a courtyard, shared parking, shared facilities, et cetera. In the proposed amendments, there are some architectural standards for those buildings. State law says that any standards that any city or county has for residential development must be clear and objective. So one of the city attorney's comments, and also in the packet, you may see the letter from the Department of Land Conservation and Development about the proposed amendments, they also commented that they thought that the architectural standards that are in the proposed amendments leave some room for interpretation and therefore are not clear and objective. Anytime you can question, well, what does this mean, then it's not clear, it could be interpreted as not being clear and objective. So the regulations, the proposed amendment had said, "All cottages shall be designed within the same, quote, 'family,' unquote, of architectural styles." I have proposed deleting the term "family" of, and to just say, "All cottages shall be designed within the same architectural style." Example elements include A, and the original draft read, "Similar buildings/roof form and pitch." And what I'm suggesting is that that phrase or be changed to read, "Building form and roof pitch shall be the same on each unit." Paragraph B had read, "Similar siding materials." I'm proposing that that be changed to, "Exterior siding materials shall be identical on each unit." So if they're, if they're going to have hardy plank, it's all hardy plank. If it's going to be shingles, it's all shingles. C had read, "Similar porch detailing," and I'm suggesting changing that to, "Porch detailing shall be the same on each unit." And the last was, "Similar window trim," and again, changing that to read, "Window trim shall be the same width." Finally, for these proposed additional amendments, in the package of amendments are changes to the standards for accessory dwelling units. The accessory dwelling unit regulations today that are in place require that either the main dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit be owner occupied and that there be at least one off-street parking space for the accessory dwelling unit beyond what is required for the main dwelling unit. A year and a half ago, the legislature amended state law and said, "Cities can't do that anymore, can't require owner occupancy and may not require additional off-street parking." So the proposed amendments that had been published eliminated those two requirements. I'm suggesting some additional changes because, again, one of the comments that the city attorney made is that actually state law says that for each single-family dwelling on a lot, the city shall allow one accessory dwelling unit. And now that we're proposing to allow more than one single-family dwelling on a lot, then we probably need to allow more than one accessory dwelling unit as well. So the changes that I'm suggesting, the additional changes I'm suggesting in the accessory dwelling unit regulations are in the purpose section to say that the purpose is to provide the opportunity for construction or placement of a small dwelling unit that is accessory to and subordinate to a principal, single-family dwelling on a lot without requiring additional lot area for the lot. So the changes, today it says "the" principal dwelling on, no, today it says "the" principal dwelling unit on a single-family lot. Well, we don't, we won't have a single-family lot anymore because of the potential to have more than one single-family dwelling. In the second paragraph on where they're located, where they may be permitted to be located, currently it reads, "One accessory dwelling unit may be located on a lot with a single-family detached dwelling." And to comply with state law, I'm suggesting we change it to read, "One accessory dwelling unit may be located on a lot for each single-family detached dwelling in the low-density or medium-density residential zones." For setbacks, what the code says today is, "If attached to the principal dwelling unit, the accessory dwelling unit shall meet the minimum setback requirements." And what I'm suggesting is change that to say, "If attached to a principal dwelling, the accessory dwelling unit shall meet the minimum setback requirements." And currently in the code, there is a standard that says that if you've got an existing house and you're creating the accessory dwelling unit by dividing the house rather than adding on to it, that you may not decrease the size of the main dwelling unit to less than 1,000 square feet. Among the changes in the proposed residential zoning amendments that have been proposed is a proposal to allow homes smaller than 1,000 square feet in the medium-density zone and the high-density zone. So therefore, I'm suggesting that we delete the reference to 1,000 square feet in this paragraph and instead say, "Creation of an accessory dwelling unit shall not reduce the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit below the minimum required by Section 1716074A1 for the zone in which it is located." So it would allow less than 1,000 square feet in those zones that allow less than 1,000 square feet. Those are the additional amendments that I have for you this evening. I will say, while I have, prior to writing the staff report and putting together the Planning Commission packet, I had sent them to the city attorney in response to his comments to me in reviewing the proposed amendments. I have not yet heard back from him saying, "Oh, yeah, I think that takes care of it," or, "Oh, tweak this a little bit more." So I may get that, I may get either one of those responses back from the city attorney. And if it is the latter, then we'll be back with more tweaks. As I said in my written staff report, the Public Works Department has expressed concern over what the potential impacts of these amendments are on the city's utility systems. And while I did include a very quick analysis of what the potential changes could mean for a couple of key vacant parcels, either in or immediately adjacent to the city, for sewer capacity, and I chose sewer capacity because that is the most recently updated utility master plan. We just did that last year, and it was done with the current growth projections in mind, whereas the water master plan and the stormwater master plan were done back in the, more than 10 years ago. Water is now almost 15 years since it's been adopted. It was based on an assumption that by now, we would be about 12,000 population instead of under eight that we are. It was, when it was done, the assumption was the city would be growing at about 3.5% per year in population growth. And so we planned our water improvements for that rate of growth. The sewer master plan, as I said, was just done in 2019, adopted in 2020, and it is based on the current growth assumptions of about 1% growth per year. And identified five parcels of land that we thought were likely to see residential development sometime in the next 20 years, and made some assumptions about the level of, the number of dwelling units that would appear on each one. And what I've done in this analysis is say, here's the assumptions that were built into the sewer master plan, here's what the maximum development that could be permitted on these parcels under today's code, and here's the range of number of dwelling units that would be permitted on each of these parcels under the proposed amendments. And for most of them, the range of units is pretty much in line with what was assumed in the sewer facilities planning study. The exception to that is the 76 acres out on East Pine Street, where the sewer study assumed it would probably be 250 to 275 units, and assuming that it's annexed and assigned low-density residential, the proposed amendments would permit between 266 and 456 units, based on as much as six dwelling units per acre, which is what the code calls for in the low-density zone. That's what I've got for you this evening. Comments, concerns, questions?
One of the pages that says memorandum.
Yep. Jesus. Hi, can I help you? There is a meeting that's going on right now. Would you like to join us? Come on in and have a seat. This is the, this is the meeting. It's on Zoom. I'm here in case anybody showed up. It started 45 minutes ago, and I just, I just lost my connection, so I'm trying to get back on. Now, there haven't been meetings in public in about a year. Yeah, you might have heard about a little pandemic happening. Yeah. Shit. Excuse me while I try to get back on to the meeting. Oh, it's telling me the meeting host will let me in, and I am the meeting host. All right, I think I'm back. All right, I'm back. Sorry about that. Yes, it dropped my connection on me here at the community center. What was I saying? Oh, the issue that was raised by the city attorney and the public work, city engineer and public works director over the issue of allowing city engineer and public works director over the issue of allowing more than one single family dwelling on a lot was what if someone has, let's say, an acre in the city today and has a house on it? And they come in and go through site plan review for one house, additional house. And then they come in next year for one additional house. And then they come in the following year for one additional house. How do we assign what the courts have called the rough proportionality of require, and they're on a street that's not fully improved or that there are other infrastructure improvements needed? How do we, on that incremental basis of one house every year or every two years, figure out how do we require improvements to the street or water or sewer system as opposed to if they had come in with a six-unit development to start off with? My response to that, and we talked about this at the January meeting, is to me, that's no different than under today's code where if you had an acre lot with a house on it and you came in to partition the house on an 8,000-square-foot lot and leave a 40 or 38,000-square-foot lot vacant to be built on. And then the next year, you came in with another partitioning to take that 38,000-square-foot lot and, and, and split it into eight and 30,000. And then two years later, came in and did it again. It's still, if someone was intent on doing that one part, one lot partitioning every other year, we'd still be in the same position. And so the fact that whether we require a partitioning or we require them to go through site plan review, as is in the proposed amendments, means that the, it makes no difference in our ability to rationally say, oh gee, now you need to contribute to paving the street or fixing the, improving the sewer line. That they'll still be the same, in the end, they'll still be the same number of dwelling units. It's just a difference as to whether they're on individual lots or parcels or whether they, and go through the partitioning process or whether they go through the site plan review process and you have one legal piece of real estate lot with six or, you know, five homes on it or six homes on it. And for me, I see, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, the code in the medium density zone allows duplexes and triplexes. If someone had an acre lot today, the code says we allow 12 units per acre in the medium density zone. And the code would allow the construction of six duplexes on an acre. Or it would allow, it would allow four triplexes on an acre in the medium density zone. So why not allow 12 single-family dwellings on that same acre if you're going to allow six duplexes or four triplexes? That's, that's the way I look at it. Let's regulate the number of dwellings that can be on a parcel of land. Let's determine which types of housing units or housing structures we want to allow in the zones. And say, here's how many dwelling units you get on a parcel of land. You can choose to, to do a subdivision, a six-lot subdivision and build single-family homes on each one. Or you can choose to build six single-family homes on, on one lot. As long as you have adequate sewer and water and access and it's meet the setbacks, et cetera, et cetera.
All these, all these houses, they six houses, they are owned by one person.
Presumably, presumably, or they could be, it could be a condominium type of ownership where the parcel of land is commonly owned and you own your house and I own my house and Dixie owns her house. Just like in a condominium, you own your apartment and I own my apartment. Just the unit in a multifamily building is the apartment. It could be the unit is a detached, single-family home, but the association owns the parcel of land.
So then it would be the association that would be coming to us to get a pool of to build?
Right. Or, or a developer, a developer comes to the city to, just like if they were going to do a 12-unit multifamily building condominium, comes in, goes through site plan review, builds it, goes to the lawyers, gets the paperwork written up to create the condominium and then sells each of the 12 units. It would be the same thing, except instead of 12 units in one building, it would be 12 units in 12 buildings.
So then the developer has the acre and does come in and goes through the process and only wants to build one house this year. When they come back to build house number two, there is the same process that had to happen and the same fees that need to be paid to build that house, correct?
Correct. Well, the, the process would be slightly different in that under the proposed amendments, the process would be a site plan review process. But it would still be notice to the neighbors, public hearing, standards that need to be met, review, review comments from the Public Works Department, city engineer, private utilities, et cetera, just like we do today. Instead of a partitioning process where it comes to the planning commission, there's a notice to the neighbors, public hearing, requests for comments from all of the other departments, agencies, private utilities, et cetera. The difference would be in site plan review, you go to the planning commission, you get approval. You go to public works, you do your final engineering for stormwater and sewer and water, et cetera. And then you go build it. For partitioning, you've got the extra step of having to hire a surveyor to prepare the plat, get the plat reviewed and approved, signed, recorded before you can sell the lot. And the reason to do that is because you're selling a lot and, and the state law says you have to have a partitioning plat to do that. But there's nothing that could, that would prohibit an individual from coming in once a year for a one-lot partition or a two-lot partitioning, splitting their lot in two. Just like there wouldn't be anything that prohibits someone going through site plan review every year for one additional house. And at some point, we would say, hey, get your act together, come in and, and show, you know, we'd say at the beginning, if someone came in with an acre and wanted to do a, a two-lot partitioning of an, of an 8,000-square-foot lot and a, and a, what's the math work out to be 38,000-square-foot lot? Or whatever, 37,000-square-foot lot. Then we would, staff would say at the very beginning, show us how this is going to get developed in the future. What we call a, a shadow plat. We wouldn't be approving those future lots, but we'd want to make sure that the first lot's being laid out to provide access in the future, to provide utilities in the future. It would be, again, it would be the same thing whether it's partitioning or site plan review.
Yeah, thanks. Good question, Ralph. Does anybody else have anything they want to add or subtract or whatever? What happens now? Should we incorporate these now?
I, I will eventually incorporate these into what will become a seventh draft. We will, we are still waiting for, the Public Works Department will be engaging their consultants to look at this for the, for a more detailed engineered impact on sewer and water and stormwater than my quick little two-and-a-half-page analysis that I did a couple of weeks ago. We will not be proceeding until there is, until, until the concerns of the Public Works Department are addressed. Then, and that may mean, that those, that those concerns may mean that their engineering consultants come back and say, oh, there really isn't much of a problem. Don't worry. Or they may come back and say, oh yeah, this will result in, in substantially more sewage flow per acre. And, and then we, we will need to go look at that and what that means for whether we change these, these amendments or whether, whether we still think it's a good idea. And that drives future sewer, you know, future master planning efforts.
What do we do with this now?
We, we, we do with it what we have done the past year and a half since we started this process. We, we will just be, I will not be bringing a seventh draft to you until the Public Works Department's concerns have been addressed.
So that's just for the next meeting then?
I, I do, I do not think, I do not think it will be the April meeting. It could conceivably be the May meeting, but I don't think this work will get done in the, in the next four weeks.
Okay.
Well, and you said the city attorney needs to look at things again.
And, and the city, right, again, the city attorney has, has seen the changes that, that I've suggested to you. They were sent to him on Tuesday or Wednesday. But I haven't gotten, you know, like I said, I have not gotten a reply back saying, yeah, Dan, I think you took care of it. Or, oh, you didn't, you know, I'm still concerned about this or that.
Okay.
So we're, we, this, this will be on hold until, like I said, until planning and public works can work out our, our differences.
Right.
I, I look at the, the analysis that I did that's in your packet and say, this, this really isn't a substantial change. I look at the, at the stormwater and the water master plans when they were written back in 2004 and '07 and the growth projections and what they, what they were planning for. And, and, and we should be planning for the, for, if this will result, these changes would result in, in additional growth than beyond what the current code would be permitting. It's not above and beyond what was being planned for when those master plans were written. Again, because of the, we have not, we've grown it at a quarter of the rate that those plans were assuming we were going to be growing at.
Okay. So, other business?
Before we move on to other business, I, I just want to say for the, for the benefit of the folks that are, that are joining us and, and actually while, while I had lost contact with you all, I actually now have somebody in the room with me. As a result of the notice of the hearing that was scheduled for tonight, I have received probably about 35 essentially copies of the same letter. Expressing opposition to the amendments. It appears that whomever the author of that letter was, who then circulated it around the community to be signed and sent in, saw the sketch of the Pine Street property that was presented to you all back in October or November by Jesse Loverin when we were trying to figure out what the relationship between density and lot width requirement was going to be. The, the, the letter expresses opposition not just to the code amendments, but to that development. I just want to be clear to those who are listening tonight that that sketch was never intended to be submitted to the city as part of a development application. That the city has not received a development application for that property. And the developer for whom that sketch was prepared no longer has that property under contract. In fact, a different developer today has that property under contract. So there, there never was a proposal for development that was reflected by the sketch that was submitted to the planning commission as an illustration showing the relationship between density and lot width. And that a number of people have attached to their letters of opposition. I just got, my internet connection is unstable, so I'm, I'm unstable.
Okay, so.
So I, I have no other business.
Okay. It looks like Taco Bell's moving along?
Yeah, I went up there this afternoon for the first time in a month. They're, they're framed and sheathed.
Do you eat chalupas any time?
Right, well, one day.
Right. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to talk about here?
No.
No. So shall we adjourn?
We should.
We should, and we are. Thank you all.
Hey, thank you everybody.
Thank you.